Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Tuesday, December 6th Planning Commission Meeting. Would you all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty. Mr. Bentley, would you please call the roll?
I will. All right. Mr. Hardy?
Here.
Mr. Tuckfield?
Here.
Mr. Marley?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Spatafora?
Here.
Mr. Oliver?
Here.
And Mr. Bentley, here.
Okay. We have everyone. That sounds good. Approval of previous meeting minutes. Any discussion?
No discussion, Mr. Chair. I move that we approve the meeting minutes from the last meeting as presented.
In our support.
Motion by Mr. Spatafora, supported by Mr. Meyerly. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Motion passes unanimously. Approval of tonight's agenda. Is there a discussion?
Now, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda. Yes, a minute.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Meyerly to approve tonight's agenda.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Spatafora. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. All right. Old business. Mr. Box, we have old business.
There is none this evening.
All right. New business. Rezoning request from Office Low Rise 01 to Commercial Local C1 Macomb Retail Center. Permanent parcels is 0808101046, 0808101045, located on the south of 25 Mile, roughly 300 feet west of Romeo Plank. Section 8, Dr. Joseph Ruggerelio. I'm probably not saying that right.
Righjarello.
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 Righjarello?
Righjarello.
It's okay. Okay.
Righjarello.
Righjarello. Okay. Well, thank you. That's better. All right. Mr. Box.
So, before I get started with this item, I did send you guys an email yesterday. The petitioner or the applicant did reach out and ask that this item, they said they could not be in attendance tonight, and they asked that this item be tabled until January, when they could be in attendance. So, as I've explained to you, it's on the agenda. You can move forward and address this item and vote on it, or you can table it. So, I guess it would be the best move to make that decision before we start talking. If you're going to table it, table it now. Otherwise, then we can start talking about it.
Well, Commissioners?
I'm okay to move forward on it.
Okay.
I don't know about the rest of the board.
Yeah. It's fine to move forward.
Mr. Chairman, if I can ask a question, Mr. Box. Are there other items that this is waiting on if we were to postpone this? How much does this impact this developer?
That's correct. They would be, assuming rezoning is approved, they would then be seeking some variances and then coming back with their site plan. At this point, they were penciled in for the January 5th ZBA meeting. If this is tabled until the January 3rd Planning Commission meeting, they would not be able to go to the January 5th ZBA because you guys are, for rezoning, are recommending. It still has to go to the board first, so they would actually get pushed back to the February zoning board meeting. And then, we would have to re-advertise again.
Understood. And, Mr. Chair, I guess my only, my only point would be, and maybe this goes a little bit against what Mr. Box was saying as far as when you'd table it, but I would certainly be open if the board looks through this and we feel that we would pass it. I would, I would want to move forward. If we got to a point where there was questions that might cause someone to vote no, and we had something that was unanswered, I would support tabling it at that point because the petitioner is not here. But if it's straightforward, which sometimes these things are, I'd certainly support moving the process along and keeping everybody moving.
Okay. Have we all agreed? Go ahead, Mr. Box. Share with us, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commission. So, as you mentioned, this site is on the south side of 25 Mile Road, west of Romeo Plank. They are the two, currently two properties. They're in the process of combining those two properties, immediately adjacent to the Righjarello Dental Practice. And they are intending to develop a new, small retail building in the C1 zoning district, should this rezoning be approved. Right now, as you can see in the aerial, it's largely undeveloped. There are single-family residences to the southwest and to the north. There is a small part of parcel 046 that the southern piece is currently vacant, but the rest of it is largely surrounded by residential. Looking at the master plan, this was one of the areas designated as potential flex use, which would therefore allow the commercial designation within the flex use, commercial or office or industrial, as we've been through kind of formulating what the flex use would allow a couple of meetings ago. They are seeking C1 specifically, so commercial use at the C1 level. Being that it matches the master plan, that would be allowed in the flex zoning category, we are recommending approval at this time.
Okay. Commissioners?
Go ahead. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I guess one thought I had, there was a request by the, by the petitioner to table. Mr. Box, was there, just for the record, I guess, was there any reason for tabling it? Did they have second thoughts? Were there any issues that they were trying to work out?
The email, which I forwarded to you, simply stated that they could not be in attendance this evening.
All right. Okay. I guess my only other comment is, it's currently 0, or 01, Office 1, and, which matches the adjacent zoned property to the east. And the traffic, as I checked the, the area with the turnaround, or turnabout, turnaround, excuse me. Thank you so much. The roundabouts, both at 25 and Romeo Plank, as well as the roundabout at 25 and Romeo Plank, as, it just seems the, the point in between, it's very, it can be very congested. And with the way the road is striped and things, I wasn't sure whether I should be turning in there from, from the east and going, going west. And, and I wasn't sure how this property, the, the property that's being proposed for commercial, would handle a lot more traffic, you know, as they had indicated, possibly going into, you know, convenience stores, things of that nature, which would demand a lot more traffic in that particular area. Not having, you know, a final site plan or a proposed site plan that, that we can review, we just have the one that was presented to us, and there seems to be like three different views of it. I wasn't sure whether it could accommodate that kind of traffic. So, I question whether or not, commercial, even though this is for flex use, and maybe they can do something with the site to make it more accessible. I, I have my questions regarding the, this, the C1 rezoning.
Okay. Anyone else?
On the drawings, too, it, it does indicate that the proposed use is office on the, on the drawings. So, I think, as you, Mr. Box, had mentioned, you know, the drawings really aren't, aren't totally up to date, and they don't all agree. So, with that, I just close my comments.
All right. Well, thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I had a question back to Mr. Bentley on that. Rich, you were mentioning your concern with the traffic. I can certainly see that concern coming from the east to the west with the tail of the roundabout there. I guess my question to you would be, if, if we are told that they couldn't get another curb cut and they'd have to enter through the dentist office parking lot, would you be comfortable even with the existing zoning, that it's already there, the office zoning, for example? Is there, you know, we, we can pretty much assume that this is not going to go residential, and at some point, this person would have to develop the parcel, we assume.
Yes.
So, I guess my question for you would be, do you think that there is a better use of this parcel than what is being requested, or is it a general concern about the parcel?
My, my concerns probably would go away if it remained office, because I don't see that much traffic.
The less, you see it as less intense on the, on the traffic perspective.
Right. Even if there was only one entrance, and that being between the two, the existing building and whatever's proposed. But that's not to say that they can't resolve that if they can get another curb cut.
Mr. Box, I know we've seen this, this parcel before. Do we know if they're not able to get another curb cut in the future? Would this have to share with the, with the adjacent parcel?
I think any, any standalone parcel would be entitled to have a curb cut, and it actually looks like, looking at the aerial, one was placed on one of the, one of the units already. Again, we're, we're only here for the rezoning, but if you do look at the site plan that's in the packet, it looks as if, when they come back with a site plan, they're going to propose sharing the one access point that they currently have. You know, they may change their mind on that, but that's what they're looking at right now, it appears.
Understood. And again, trying to maintain it within a use for the parcel and not, and I appreciate, obviously, looking and seeing what they have. I'm just making sure that I, I understand Mr. Bentley's concern and have thought through it sufficiently as well. If you were to say that this was a commercial use and they came back with a site plan that showed a curb cut or, or not sharing the existing one, would you, would you be more comfortable with that? Or is it, is it, is it the intensity of the use in that general location and not the specific location of the driveway?
I just, I just find it that the intensity would increase more with the commercial. With office, it would be what it is, and, and I don't see that being as much as could possibly happen with, with commercial. And certainly, they may come up with a design that, that works well. I'm not, I'm not totally ruling it out. It's just a concern.
No, and I would, I would agree with you, and one of the things I think about, we have an intersection at 23 Romeo Plank that has a specific driveway without naming names. I think we all know the driveway that is just generally bad relative to east-to-westbound traffic. And I could see how this could potentially, you could have some similar ingredients here. I guess on my end, looking at this without a site plan and just looking at the use, to me, it's not about the intensity, per se. It's about where the driveway is and any intensity. If that driveway is a problem, added there could be a problem. So, to me, it's more a concern of where the driveway is located, which I would think would be a later, a later question, more than the use of the property. So, for, for me, I can understand your concern. I don't think it is as much for, for me, but I appreciate you letting me pick your brain and make sure I understood it. So, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And, Mr. Box, if we rezoned this, or C1, and later on, as we look at the site plan, and that's not what we're doing tonight, is looking at the site plan, and we, we don't like it, or it doesn't seem to fit well, and we want to change it back to Office 1, we can do that, right?
You wouldn't be changing it back to Office 01, no. You would have some purview to approve or deny a site plan.
Okay. All right. Okay. Anyone else?
Just back to that briefly, Mr. Chairman, if I could. If we have a site plan in front of us, I, I've, I've seen a lot of site plans. I know I should know the answer to this, but usually, we, when we reference curb cuts, we refer to the road commission. Assuming, big assumption, assuming the road commission is fine with sharing another curb cut or having a new one, do we have any say in that, past that?
Not really, no.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Bad for him?
Yeah. To Josh, did, by chance, did the planning department maybe look at other possible flex zone, zoning categories that perhaps could have fit there, that may have been either less intensive or different, that would have fit in that particular area, knowing that across the street to the north and, and west, you're going to have a large residential development coming in with still further parcels to be developed? I'm just curious if maybe we look beyond that a bit.
Right. So, I think with the, the uses that are allowed in the flex zone, office is probably the least intensive use that's allowed, and that's what it's currently zoned. I would say C1, which they're proposing, is probably the next least intensive. Going, were they to propose residential, it, the flex use allows up to the six units per acre, that could very quickly get more intense in terms of traffic and other use than what I, a C1, I would think.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Bentley?
Another question, just regarding the site plans, and there are several here, I think, three. Are we not to really consider the site plans at all in our consideration of the zoning change? Or, or is that, I mean, since it was submitted, is it part and parcel of our, our review?
They did submit it, so I think, you know, obviously, you can look at it, and maybe to the extent of how much you weigh that into your decision for the use and the zoning, my opinion would be that it should weigh very little, because they're going to have to come back to you with a site plan that you would approve or deny. I guess I can defer to Mr. Alloya on that. Yeah. I, I don't think the site plan has any bearing. The question is whether or not we're going to rezonate based on the type of uses they can have. These are simply concepts that you're not voting on tonight, and, as you know, they can come back in their site plan review, can be totally different than what they've, they have here. So, I mean, I think it's there for your view, conceptually, of what they could potentially do there, but you're not voting on it based on this concept. You're ba, you're, you're voting on it as, based on whether this is the type of zoning use, okay? The uses within that zoning that we would agree to, okay? And you, you take in mind as to whether it's in line with the master plan or not, those types of things, okay?
Thank you.
Yep.
And, and yes, it is in line with the master plan. One other question that I had, and, and this might, one of their plans identified handicap parking, though, but on somebody else's property. Is, is that something that we would ever consider? Or does it have to be on the property if it is ever submitted? Just for my edification, I'd like to know whether or not.
So, for shared parking, we do allow cross-access agreements and shared parking agreements and those type of things. I'm not sure you'd want to do that with, with an accessible space and have the shared accessible space across, you know, a parking lot. Typically, accessible spaces are supposed to be located as close as possible to the entrance of the building.
Right.
And that'll all be part of the planning?
That'll be part of the site plan.
Yeah. Final site plan. Okay.
All right. Anyone else?
Yes. I'd say again that I was taking a look at the principal uses and the special land uses under the C1 zoning, and a concern that popped in my head, listening to what Mr. Bentley and Mr. Tuckfield were saying, as far as the intensity, and if another curb cut was probably further moved to the west, is special land use that would be permitted could be a, a carryout restaurant, but that, it does exclude a drive-in, right?
Correct.
And I can see where a drive-through and a drive-in restaurant could really potentially back up something that perhaps down the line, as traffic grows, could add more. But then again, you know, the C1 within the flex zoning, the only other alternative perhaps would be to keep it in 01. But looking at all the principal permitted uses and even the special land uses, per se, I don't have a problem rezoning to, to C1, but I can see some questions that if the applicant were here tonight, could probably address and ask them as far as if they considered any other rezoning in that particular area. They did request to be tabled because they weren't here, but now that we've taken 20 minutes to consider it, I don't know, unless there's a strong consensus of the commission here that, you know, wait, I'd rather ask the petitioner some questions that certainly would relate to the rezoning. I can go either way on this, so.
And this is just about the rezoning tonight?
That's correct.
It's not about the, the plan?
Just to throw in on that, they are going to bring a plan, an actual site plan, probably a hand-drawn one at first. That's usually your first meetings, right?
Sometimes, yeah.
We want to do this, we want to do that. And then, our planner and our engineer and our assistant engineers will go into that with probably all the same things we're thinking of tonight. And the C1, or 01, C1, is a pretty light, when you look at it, there's not a lot, it's pretty close to, you know, the, the commercial. You wouldn't put a gas station there. You wouldn't put very big of a retail there. And my thoughts, if, when they do come in, because this is a tricky parcel with that roundabout there, and I, I think a lot of that will be determined right in your planning office first, and then we're going to get something, because you got our taste of what's going on out here. And so, that's, that's why I, I would have no problem moving forward on this tonight. But whatever the board wants to do, okay?
Well, the 01 zoning is primarily professional offices Yep. and some trade offices. And then, when you have a commercial, whether it's as depicted on this site plan depiction that was included in our
Yeah, and I think
packet, it could be up a little bit. Now, you're looking at maybe a, you know, retail sales store. That, you know, could increase traffic coming in and going out. So, and I don't know if the applicant, the fact that he's looking to, he or she are looking to rezonate, I don't know if there's any intent to keep it at an 01, because they already have an existing dental office there. I'm not sure if they wanted to put in other offices. They might be different, since they're looking also to combine the parcel into one. So, it's an interesting little agenda I have here that, as far as potential uses.
It's a unique piece of property.
Yeah.
In kind of a tough spot.
Right.
Okay. Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, I just add, add the comment that if I look at the neighborhood, the neighborhood can bear little stores, probably you could say it needs little stores. We have a lot of residential around there. We do not have a lot of commercial. I don't like the adjacency to the roundabout, but in any, for any other reason, I would say that this would be not something I would think about. Commercial one is low density relative to commercial. Office, we don't know what's going to happen to office, but certainly, the trends right now are that it is not very viable. And, and on a parcel like this, I don't, I, I don't know what would get built there. Maybe something would get built there down the road, but, but office-wise, that's, that's, that's going to be a really tricky parcel to develop. So, I guess for me, even with some of the other concerns I have, which I do have them, I'd, I'd still move to go forward with it, just because I think that it's something that the surrounding neighborhood needs. It does fit with our master plan, and I, I don't see a great alternative to what they're asking for.
Okay. All right. If there are no other comments, do we have a motion on the floor?
I'll look.
Oh. Yes, we have to go to the public. I didn't see you guys. Do I need a motion to open it to the public?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Oliver, supported by Mr. Meyerly. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right. If you're in the public, and there are three of you out there, and you'd like to come up and comment about the rezoning request from office to low-rise commercial, please come to the podium over here and state your name and address. Anyone? Okey-dokey.
Motion to close.
Motion to close by Mr. Oliver.
Support.
Supported by Mrs. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion passes. All right. Now, do we have a motion on this item? Either way. Anybody would like to make that motion?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion. To move forward on this rezoning, low office to commercial C1, permanent parcel 0808101 046 and 0808101045.
I'll second. And so, motion by Mr. Oliver, seconded by myself. Mr. Bentley, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Spatafora?
Yes.
Mr. Marley?
Yes.
Mr. Bentley? Yes. Mr. Tuckfield?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes. All right. Onto the next item. Site plan, the Silver House. Permanent parcel 0805351023, located on the northeast corner of 25 Mile Road and Romeo Plank. Section 5. Avante Development Group LLC petitioner. Mr. Box?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commission. Let me start by saying that I appreciate working with these gentlemen. They've, they've been through a lot to get to this point. This is several years in the making. When I came to the township almost three years ago, this process had already started. At that time, the roundabout wasn't there yet, so they were kind of put on hold until they figured out how much property they were going to lose because of the roundabout, which you can see in the aerial behind you. They did lose quite a bit. Then, when they were finally done with the roundabout and they were ready to move forward, they needed to combine the properties. They couldn't combine the properties because there was an issue with the structure and the neighboring property, so they had to go through several hoops to get to this point. So, they're finally here, and, and this is, they are seeking approval of a site plan, and the structure is there and has been there for a long time, which, so I'm going to give you a little bit of history on the property. I, I wondered, how did this exist already without a site plan? And the reasoning is because of how old this property is. This structure is very old. Now, granted, it's been renovated over the years, so I don't know how much of the original structure is still there. But what I did find out was, the original structure was actually built in 1896. And some of you, Mr. Oliver, I know you've been around a while.
You were alive then?
You may remember some of the names. You may remember some of the names that, so it was built by William and Johann Schuf. It was then owned by the Bayerlys. That was Myers Market after that. Clem's Market.
Clem's.
D&amp;M Market, and now, the Silver House. And to put that in perspective, 1896, so one of the buildings that we often see as a, an older building in the township is at 22 and Romeo Plank, the Dot Brothers Building. That was 1909. This is older than that. The, the only building that I could find in the township that was older was Goldie's, which was originally Kling's Tavern from 1874. So, this has been there a long time, which is why there was no site plan ever, because it's been there for a long time. So, that being said, they are essentially just looking to pave the parking lot that exists. It gets muddy often when it rains, something, again, Something, again, they've been trying to do for a number of years. And now that the roundabout is there and they've got through the issues with combining the property, we're ready to move forward with this. It's very, very straightforward. They already have their curb cuts from the roundabout. As you see in the site plan, they have a loading zone, they have their dumpster and their curb cuts. They have more parking than what is required. They're going to be doing sodding and irrigation where required. And again, it's very much just paving the parking lot, but because they don't have a site plan, they're here to get an approval for an entire site plan. So that being said, staff is very much in support of this.
Okay. Commissioner, petitioner, state your name and address for us.
Absolutely. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Andy Andre from Avanti Development Group, 330 Enterprise Court in Bloomfield Hills, 48302. I think Mr. Box did a fantastic job at describing the timeline and the process that the applicant has been through on this, and it's been a hurdle, one hurdle after another, but I think we're nearing that point. All that the applicant is looking to do is to do actual improvement to this, which I think it would be, it goes very well with the area now that the roundabout is completed there. This will go very well within the area. One of the things that we will be doing is we also incorporated detention basin. So with paving it, we did allocate in that northeast portion of the property enough space to do that. We actually submitted some preliminary engineering plans to township engineer, and it's all sized accordingly. So we've taken those steps as well. So again, very anxious to move forward. It's something, a project that most likely would be done this coming spring. We're fortunate to move forward, and I think it'll go well within the neighboring area. I'm also going to pass this along to Mr. Box, but as part of the, as part, the applicant received quite a few from clients that come in that often has a very good loyal following there. People that couldn't make the meeting tonight but were in support of the project, so I'm going to pass this along to him. So a lot of people are anxious for us to move forward. So be happy to answer any questions that come. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Andre. All right, questions, commissioners?
I just had a few. I did take a look. I did drive in the existing parking area, and with the entrance and the exit, the way it's laid out, it seems doable, it seems safe. And even when traffic was a little tough, it was good. I was surprised though to see the little jog where the detention basin is, but that jog is there. I did notice the tree that was mentioned to be taken out. But I think it was fine. The only comment I saw in that, Mr. Box, you had mentioned about the eight foot requirement for the sidewalk. The drawings, at least the one drawing I have here, indicates it's only five foot. It is currently existent, and it's only partial. It only goes to, you know, the little island. It doesn't continue on. So is that the area that would be required further east of the south entrance and then further north of the northwest entrance? Is that what needs to be added? Or you had indicated it's already shown on your previous slide.
Yeah, so as you see in the aerial, some of the sidewalk was built with the roundabout. It does appear that there's some connections that need to be made at the edges of the property. And so that's something that we will have to do. They'll connect that eight foot pathway.
Is that something that needs to be shown prior to our review? Or is that something that'll come during our final site plan approval?
So this is the final site plan approval. So I think you can, if you want to just make a motion, you could state that it would be contingent on that. It's something that they wouldn't get through the engineering process without having those anyway. So it'll be there by the time they're through engineering.
And then the five foot walk that's already there, that was put in with the roundabout, will that be forced to be made eight or what?
My, I don't know this for sure, but my guess is that's a typo that is already eight foot. I think the county road department would not have put a five foot sidewalk in there.
That was my thought as well, but I saw that and thought I'd question it. And if it was reduced or increased, if it was five and reduced that parking to by three foot, it would tighten it up a bit, but I still think doable.
If I could, Mr. Bentley?
Yeah.
The eight foot walk is actually what we call the pathway. So the pathway was installed as part of the roundabout project. So that's the part that's entiter, the five foot walk is on the property. And so we have incorporated that already. So I think both the eight foot, and I think as Mr. Box has mentioned, there might be a little bit of an extension that might be required, and we would have no objection to a condition of that. But the pathway was installed as part of the roundabout project.
The eight foot pathway?
Yes, yes, it was.
Okay. I don't see it other than that five foot walk, and that might be a misnomer. So I guess that would be the only thing that, only concern I had would be to just make sure that that's complete to property lines, both on the west, or the west northwest and the east, southeast. And then detention basin, I know that comes in, that'll come in later with engineering. What is the plan, however? Where is that going to be drained?
Right, so that's a good question. So we worked pretty closely with the road department when they were doing the initial planning and then the construction of it. There was a, as part of the storm system that they installed, they made a connection out to us. So there's an available connection for us to connect to on the Romeo Plank side, about midpoint up of the property. So it's been stubbed out for us.
Okay, all right. So on that west, on that west
Exactly.
side coming across?
That's correct.
All right. Appreciate that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bentley.
I just got one question. You had to put in just to pave it, we had to put the detention basin in just for the paving?
That's correct.
Okay. You had nothing to do with developing north or east of that, correct?
No, that was specific for this property and related to the parking lot.
Anyone else? Mr. Oliver?
When do you think you'll start?
Spring. I think with the timing of everything, I think spring would be a real attainable goal.
Hopefully you'll be able to get some out.
It's loosening up a little bit.
Good, I'd like to hear that.
Okay, anyone else? Oh, Mr. Bentley?
Yeah, there was one other question. And again, it might be the graphics, the existing building, since there wasn't a site plan and you're doing a site plan. So the building appears to be, at least on C3.0, the building seems to be on the adjacent property. And I wondered if that's just a graphical error or what?
Right, that's a good question. I think that goes back to another point that Mr. Box brought up was that timeframe that we worked with to do a lot combination. So what you see in front of you was initially two lots. It now has been combined, and I think all of that's been worked through with the township through the assessor's office.
Yes, so you're correct. A small portion of that building does protrude onto the neighboring property. When they were two separate parcels, they needed to combine them because the one parcel is a parking lot. You can't have an accessory use without a principal structure. Therefore, they needed to combine them. The issue they ran into was trying to combine them because that structure hangs on to the adjacent property. It's a non-conforming use. They needed to bring it into conformity to combine them. We reached out a number of times to the adjacent landowner. They were not receptive whatsoever, and it was determined by Mr. Tomlinson, one of the township attorneys, that there was no reason we could not combine those two properties because we were not adding to the non-conformity. We didn't increase it, we didn't make it greater. So being that the neighboring property was not going to address this at all, we made the decision to move forward.
Okay. All right, so that's been dealt with?
Correct.
Thank you. That's all.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's all right. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, just a comment. It's a lot of work to improve the property with the parking lot. I appreciate the work you guys have done. It helps a busy trafficked area of our township look better and work better, and the customers for this store, I'm sure, will be appreciative to have concrete and not mud.
Absolutely.
So I just, I've not spent a lot of times on the other side of this desk, but I've spent a little bit, and I've had the frustration of trying to make something better and not being able to when it's a clear benefit for everybody. So I can appreciate a little bit what you've done. I probably can't appreciate it fully, but I do appreciate it and just pass on to your client that we appreciate his business in the township or their business in the township.
Absolutely.
Look forward to many years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, at this time, I'd like to open it to the public with a motion at 7:11.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Oliver.
Support.
Supported by Mrs. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, so there's a couple of you in the audience. If you'd like to come up, please come up to the podium and speak. Give us your name and address. You have four minutes. Okay, well then at 7:12, I'd like a motion to close the public portion. Supported by Mr., or motion by Mr. Oliver, supported by Mrs. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Now, do we have a motion on this item?
If no further discussion, Mr. Chairman, I will move that we approve the site plan for the Silver House. Permanent parcel 08-05-351-023 pursuant to the recommendation by our planner and the, what I think is pretty thorough and a bit of a historic discussion from the commission here.
Support.
Okay, motion by Mr. Spatafora, supported by Mrs. Smith.
May I add the stipulation for the completion of the eight foot walk? Or no?
Sure, we'll amend that. My motion to reflect that accordingly, the eight foot walk, as discussed.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Spatafora amended with the eight foot walk, supported by Mrs. Smith. Mr. Bentley, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Mr. Spatafora?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Bentley, yes. Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield?
Yes.
Mr. Marley?
Yes.
And Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay, next item, public comments on non-agenda items. Is there anyone that would like to speak tonight? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to commissioners' comments. Anyone?
I said it before the meeting, but kudos to the Macomb Township, their board, the employees, the staff, and everyone involved for making the Macomb Township Hall probably the most beautifully decorated municipal building anywhere in the area, this region, certainly in Macomb County. It just looks beautiful, it's festive, and very happy looking.
I support that.
Go ahead. And on behalf of my granddaughter, who is three, the tree lighting ceremony was a huge hit, especially when Santa Claus came right in front of her. And I think she thinks that he waved at her. So she's thrilled to death. So love the fireworks as well. I think that was new this year, if I'm not mistaken.
First time.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, then we'll move on to the Macomb Township Board of Trustees liaison update. Mr. Charles Oliver.
Thank you, Mr. Hardy. So now, we ended up with two meetings before we got to the planning. So I'm going to give you an update on November 16, BOT meeting. And I'm going to briefly go through it. We picked a contractor that's called Warren Company to do Pitchford Park. Cost is approximately $4 million. Second, the parking rack is going to have four electronic scoreboards in the baseball fields. So that'll be an update.
That's at Macomb Corners?
No questions. Yeah, Macomb Corners.
It's great.
I'm sorry. The other thing, we approved the Garfield Road to get started. Our portion between 23, 22, and 23 is approximately $3.2 million. Okay? If anyone knows Crystal Kozak, she moved up a step, and she's our assistant engineer in the township. We promoted four firefighters, two sergeants. And I got some voting stats here. Roughly 44,000 voters voted in the election. Forty-two percent was absentee and 57% was at the poll. So that was November 16 meeting. Now, the meeting we just had, November 30, we just renewed the contract for the, our utility bills. We have a company doing that, and it's out of state. It was somewhat of a test, because we were a little bit concerned, the company being so far, but it's worked out pretty good, and they've done it real reasonable. We've hired a GSI specialist. That'll be mapping, but there'll be many, many more other things that this person can do. And we're buying new media equipment for our media department. So that is the update of two board meetings. And that's all I have, sir.
All right, sir, thank you.
No questions.
You pointed at Mr. Bentley, so I'm going to ask one.
I want no questions.
I didn't say that just to
He pointed right at you. I saw that. Charlie, do we have an expected start date for the Hayes or the Garfield, Garfield project?
I think this spring.
I think they're shooting it for the spring.
We think the spring.
And are they expecting to complete that next year, all the way through?
That's a one mile section I talked about.
Okay, the 22 to 23 section?
That's it. What do you need?
Thank you.
Nah, come on.
I'm not going to ask any
Yeah, you can. I think I answered it.
I'm not one to ask questions.
No, I noticed that.
I guess I have a question for Charlie. The scoreboards, are they for the softball side or the baseball side?
I don't know. I guess you're going to have to ask.
I'll call her.
I think they work the baseball side. You could call some. Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, let's move on to
We got one more question.
Oh, one more? Oh, go ahead.
This is for Mr. Charlie. No questions, Oliver. Did the contractor for Pitchford Park give an approximate start time or start date?
Today, I think there was a pre-con meeting, wasn't there?
That's correct.
So they're moving forward.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Are they able to work through the winter?
I don't know the answer to that.
Do you have an estimated completion?
Just about a year for that, yeah.
Just pickleballs, right?
Okay.
Are we good?
No, they're going to start clearing trees, I think, for the 22 to 23 mile corridor starting this winter. So they're really going to start prepping.
Yeah, I had somebody who I talked to today who lives there said that they seem to be getting busy back there. They've been doing staking and some other
Yeah, they might even get it done by the end of the year, the tree clearing. And we may have a conditional rezoning agreement soon for the last piece which would be affected on the 23 mile side, and that would be the last piece to acquire, because it's, the dedication is part of that conditional rezoning.
All right.
All right. We'll move on now to the ZBA liaison update. Mr. Tuckfield?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We've had one ZBA meeting, I think, since we last met, and I would actually mention, we saw two variance requests for Jacuzzis. Specifically, we've seen a fair number of requests over the years of the distance of a pool from a principal structure. The reasoning for that ordinance has been foggy. I've gotten multiple answers for why that particular ordinance exists that I've never particularly been happy with, and we've generally had a relatively low bar for giving a variance on that particular request. That said, we had two Jacuzzi requests. We did end up granting both of them, but one of the things that I think we kind of found out in the process, Mr. Box kind of brought us up to speed on it, is that there was a the Jacuzzis have been treated differently than pools for the last few years, because the ordinance does not specifically call them out. And there was not great understanding if they should be treated the same as pools. So, one of the things that hopefully our new ordinance will clear up, and this is, this is one of the things we have going forward, is to define that differently, or define that the same, or however we're going to do it, because what had been being done by several different administrations is they were arbitrarily granting a different distance from the house to a Jacuzzi, because a Jacuzzi was different, and there was no clear definition between a Jacuzzi and a pool. So, in this particular case, I think the variances solved the specific issues, and it's just one more place where the ordinance probably needs to be tweaked, that is being highlighted and hopefully is going to be adjusted with the upcoming ordinance change. So, not sure there's much for us to do at the moment, but if we see any language like that in the new ordinance, that's probably why we'll see it specifically called out. So, that's all I had.
Okay.
Is there a difference between above ground, below ground with Jacuzzis versus pools?
In our current ordinance, no. It doesn't stipulate any difference. We had talked about this, I talked about this briefly with Mr. Maples, and he was mentioning that in the building code, it typically treats them the same. Obviously, they are a body of water. You can have a pool that is a body of water, above ground or below ground. They both have heating elements. So, from a building structure, there is a lot of similarity. Relative to the ordinance that said they should be 10 feet away from the house, I've heard three different reasons, and none of the reasons seem to apply well to Jacuzzis. So, one, I believe, historical reason was that there was a concern of people jumping off a house into a pool. I'm not sure that putting it at 10 feet is the best solution for that. It seems like it just increases the likelihood of the concrete being met, not the water. And then also barometric, or hydrostatic pressure from the pool to the basement wall, which, talking with architects and other people, that seemed to be not a great reason either, because of the way the pressure goes down from the bottom edges of the pool as opposed to toward a basement wall, unless it's in like really close proximity. So, there was no real good definition between the two, but I think the reasoning for the 10-foot also doesn't apply very well to a Jacuzzi, even though they might be defined very similarly.
Okay. Planning Department items. Mr. Box?
Nothing major to report on. I will mention, and Charlie already mentioned this, that we did get board approval to hire a GIS position within the planning department. That position will serve planning, engineering, water and sewer, a number of different departments. They will sit in the planning department, but they will serve a lot of different departments. And she's looking to start, actually not till March, so we have some time, actually, before she starts. And then, Mr. Hardy, you mentioned the tree lighting. I was there as well. It was a great event. I believe I heard from Mr. DiCaro that between the folks who were there, the actual tree lighting, and the folks who went into the parking rec building afterwards, there were over 2,000 attendees, so that's, that's a lot. It's fantastic. And that's it.
And probably more from the year before. So, it keeps growing?
Yes.
Okay. All right, motion to adjourn.
Make that motion.
Motion by Mrs. Smith, seconded by Mr. Oliver. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We are adjourned.